Okay, we're going to be starting in just one moment. Thank you for everyone's attention. Good evening. It's Tuesday, June the 3rd, and I'm going to be calling this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection, and we're going to be reflecting this evening on how grateful we are that we have a new CIO, starting with us, Mike Melanischen. So please join me in wishing him in your silent reflection a lot of energy, resilience, enthusiasm, and commitment to Port Hope. Thank you. Moving on to our land acknowledgement, the municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Michisagak and Anishinaabe traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work, and play, including the Ganaraska Forest and River. We pay respect to elders, past, present, and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations Métis and Inuit Peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from Indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? I note that none were received in advance of tonight's meeting, seeing none. Moving on to item three, we do have no correspondence this evening. Item number four, we're going to start with 4.1, Report CS 1325, RE 2026 Municipal Election Alternative Voting Method. I'm going to turn it over to our clerk for some more comments and highlights of the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So, good evening. We are now starting our, well, actually not starting. We have started our preparations for the 2026 municipal and school board elections. And so I'm very pleased to present this report to you tonight. It outlines the recommendations related to the method of voting for the upcoming election. So, as council is aware, you know, under the Municipal Elections Act, the clerk serves as the returning officer, and the clerk has independent legislative authority to administer as well as manage all aspects of the election. That said, there are certain decisions, such as the selection of an alternative voting method, which do require council's approval, and that is the focus of tonight's report. So, you know, the report clearly outlines that following a comprehensive review of best practices, legislative requirements, financial implications, as well as past precedent, you know, staff are recommending that the municipality continue with internet and telephone voting as the voting method for the 2026 election, as we have since 2010. You know, this recommendation is rooted in our experience in successfully delivering the municipal elections via these methods, as I said, since 2010, as well as the recognition of the accessibility, security, and efficiency that these platforms offer, both to the voters as well as to the municipality. Given the lead time that it takes to secure an election vendor and ensure a smooth implementation, we are seeking council direction now to proceed with the procurement, just to ensure that we are, you know, in line with our procurement as well as legislative frameworks. And should council approve the recommendation tonight, then staff will proceed with the necessary next steps, including the preparation of the authorising bylaw as well as vendor procurement. I am here to answer any questions you have with respect to the report, and I will do my best to answer any other questions you have related to the elections. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the report. And more importantly, thank you for navigating us through so successfully in a number of elections now and bringing forward these best practices for our consideration this evening. So at this point, I'm going to turn it to my colleagues for further questions and comments. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. So through the chair, I have a few questions. I get feedback from residents sometimes who are not in favour of this method, and there's two reasons for that. One is those who are just comfortable voting by paper ballot and don't want to change from that process. And the other is the integrity behind how the votes are, how they happen. So, in the last, I noticed when I ran, there was a few duplicates of voters who got two cards, but in the last by-election, I was, I, many people came forward to me that they received multiple cards at their address for previous occupants who had moved away, in some cases decades ago. And there was no rhyme or reason. Some families, some residents had one past resident, some had two cycles ago. So can you explain how that happened? And if there's a risk moving into this election with knowing that in the by-election, the lists were so different?
Thank you for that question, councillor Mink. So if I understand correctly... Okay, so if I understand correctly, there's two aspects of the question that you're asking. One is related to the integrity of the election, so security, and the second is regarding the voters' list. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask, I'm going to answer the latter part first. So the first thing I do want to highlight is that regardless of what alternate voting method you choose, whether it is the paper ballot, whether it's internet telephone voting, mail-in ballots, whatever it is that you choose, the creation of the voters' list is a separate practice. It's not, it's not related to the alternate voting method. So regardless of what method you choose, that will remain the same. Now, in terms of the, you know, some of the things that you are sharing with me with respect to the concerns that were raised, we did provide quite a bit of education with respect to what would were to happen if you were to receive a voter card that was not, you know, associated with your home. In fact, the card that was received very clearly stated that if you received this card, you should be, you should not be using it, you should be returning it. The other thing I do want to highlight also is that the voters' list is managed by Elections Ontario, and this is actually going to be the first election where they are providing the list to us. You know, we were, I think, the third municipality in 2024 that were, that used Elections Ontario's voters' list. And following that, you know, following that experience, we provided quite a bit of feedback to them. I know other clerks who went through by-elections who also provided feedback to Elections Ontario, and they have been extremely responsive to that feedback, and they've been very open to, and with us, with respect to the changes they've made. It has been beneficial, of course, that we just went through a provincial election, and because of that, you know, it has helped with, with, you know, the confirmation of the voters' list. I don't want to go into too many details about what we do from an administrative perspective to manage the voters' list. But what I can say is that we have a very robust administrative practice that is, that is ensuring that the voters' list is as accurate as possible. So we work with Elections Ontario, we do our own due diligence. Will there be a few situations where maybe there are people who are receiving, you know, cards that, that no longer live there? Yes, of course, that, that will happen. One of the things that we will be trying to do, and which we will continue doing, is really provide a lot of education to voters with respect to what they should be doing with those cards as well. The second item that you had raised was just with respect to the integrity of the election, and I know the, the report speaks to, to that, to a certain degree, and, and, you know, we have spoken to many of the election vendors who manage internet and telephone voting, just to get an idea of what the security protocols are, without, again, going into too many details, because much of that is proprietary information. Staff are quite satisfied with respect to, you know, the security of the, of the system that they have currently in place. You know, as far as we know, it is well protected against hackers as well, and this has been verified and tested by outside experts. You know, some people compare it to as, being as secure as online banking in many ways, and that's likely the most secure you can be. The other thing that I do want to highlight is that there is a two-step verification process when it comes to the election, so, to voting, rather. So what that would mean is that even if someone were to get, get a card, they would have to know some additional information about that person in order for them to even be able to cast their ballot. And this is a common practice, and it usually deters a lot of people from, you know, in, in essence, committing a fraudulent act, a criminal act, which is to vote for more than once in an election. It is a criminal act. If we were to find out about it, you know, that would be something we'd be turning over to the authorities. So I hope that answers the question that you had, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So it does. So just one follow-up, maybe comment or suggestion, or maybe even a question, and then sort of a different question, is that when, so one concern is that if, if this new list does have people on it now that no longer live there, the total number of voters could be inflated. So is there a way that you could be notified rather than the person just ignore it, but as best as people are willing to say, hey, I got four voter cards here that don't belong here, and then we can officially subtract them?
Yes, we can. So, so one of the things that we will be doing as part of our election preparation is we will be having a very, very strong communication effort. Oh, sorry. Yeah, my apologies. So we will have a very robust process with respect to the education and communication around the voters' list. We'll be encouraging residents to sign up for the voters' list, ensure that, you know, there'll be methodology for them to be able to check to see whether they're on the voters' list. This will be done by us, but it'll also be done in conjunction with Elections Ontario. There are processes within the Municipal Elections Act that give the clerk the authority to, to change or, or edit the list, you know, and there's certain stipulations around that. So one of the things that we'll also be doing, and we have done in the past, is that we would be asking any electors who receive cards that are no longer valid to send them back to us. And when they do that, that would, we would take those cards, and we would be adjusting the voters' list. So the final, you know, tally that would come through would be based on that final voters' list on that last day of the election. So we will be doing those edits until the very last day, until frankly, until 7:45, most likely.
Yes, and one last question from the deputy mayor.
Thank you. And so to the very first point I made, of those residents who are still advocating for paper ballots, what would be the associated cost if it was on election day only that that option was available for those residents, perhaps only in one poll?
Only in one poll? So, so, okay. Yeah, sorry about that, guys. Okay. So, the fact remains that if we, we can't really do it by, by one poll. If we were to do a paper ballot election, like, we would be choosing that as an alternative method, regardless of whether we do it on voting day or we do it as part of the advanced voting. It would, I mean, it would essentially be that we're running two elections. One is internet and telephone voting, and the second is paper ballots. We would have to prepare separately auditing processes, administrative processes, logic accuracy testing, all of that would have to be done, you know, in a dual way. The report does speak to what the cost of that would be, which would be about $135,000 plus substantial staffing costs, because of course it would be like running two elections.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Question, councillor Daryl? Councillor Adam? Nope. Everyone else? Okay. So the recommended motion is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder for it? Moved by councillor Adam, seconded by councillor Les. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favour? Thank you. Moving on to 4.2, Report PS 0925, Re Parking Meter Beacon Purchase. Does staff have anything further to add before council considers the report?
Madam Mayor, through you to council, this is basically just a continuation of our revamping of Walton Street and the downtown core from a parking standpoint. When the construction was originally done in phase two, we went out and we procured new parking meters from McKay Meters, which is Canadian, by the way, to replace the existing meters which did not accept debit cards, credit cards. And we're not solar powered, so they didn't have the ability to track the parking data that we would need to move ahead with any type of HBIA working groups and stuff like that. They would need helping out with staff hours and patrols. These meters allow us to know when the meters are full, so it saves on staff time. So we went ahead, we put together the reports. The total cost is just a little over $87,000. We're looking to take it from our parking meter revenue reserves, which sit at about $188,000, so still leave us with $100,000 left. And I would be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you for that. I have a question. Will they make us more money for our reserves?
I believe so, they will.
Any other questions from councillor Les?
Yeah, do you want to talk about hosting fees and why they're applicable and why they're a benefit to us?
Absolutely. So generally, the, the hosting fees for the entire meter count, which with the 86 and the 38 that we've procured is going to run us roughly about $18,000. The hosting fees are hosting all the data that we take in. They host in when, with coins we take in, they host what, what times the party... So basically, they, they host all the analytics that these parking meters have, and the McKay meters backends that data, so we can pull it at any point in time. Because of course, we don't have a server farm unless somebody has told me, no, we don't have a server farm. So they host it on our behalf, and it's just kind of the cost of doing business.
A follow-up, are you, you're good? Yep. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, councillor Adam.
Thank you. So, so the meters downtown, I love them. I think they're fantastic. I think after people use them one or two times, they've learned it well enough that it's very quick and simple, very similar to the coin ones in the past. But the brightness setting, it always seems to be a problem, and especially as we're getting into the bright summer days. Do these new ones have a higher brightness setting that makes it easier to see?
Madam Mayor, through you to councillor Pearson, yes, they do, and we have looked in, we've been in contact with McKay. We're going to be making them all much brighter. It will take a little bit of time, because we're going to have to do it piece by piece, and, but we will be getting to it. We will be making them brighter. So that is the only kind of concern that we've received from the parking meters, is the brightness, and we're definitely working on it for sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And thank you for your responsiveness to those concerns as well. So the recommended motion is listed on our agenda this evening. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by councillor Adam, seconded by councillor Daryl. Any further discussion? All in favour? Thank you. And at this point, I am going to be turning the chair over to the deputy mayor, as I have a previous obligation this evening.
Okay, so we will move forward with notice of motions. The first notice of motion is 5.1, Notice of Motion Regarding Community Grants Restructuring. This was moved by councillor Atridge and seconded by myself. And to the clerk, am I reading the whole motion? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, so I will open it up for discussion, and I will let councillor Atridge, councillor Todd, go ahead.
Right, thanks very much. I won't speak much to the notice, other than the fact that community grants has, has always been an item that we've discussed, and anyone who has sat through one of our sessions during budgets when we are looking at community grants, you're probably well aware that the process has a great deal of subjectivity to it. And so what this motion does is it purports to restructure it so that the community gets, I guess, more bang for the buck, because what will happen is the events or the items that we want to advance through the strategic plan will be put forward, and community then will be able to come and work with us to get funding. So it brings together, I think, more accountability towards the money that the taxpayers are putting in, and takes a lot of the subjectivity out of the grants entirely.
Thank you. So normally, as a chair, I would speak last, but since I seconded, I'll just briefly speak. So I had, I actually had a different motion that I wanted to bring forward regarding this, but councillor Todd brought this forward, and I agreed to support, to support this. What's more important, I think, that almost everybody around the table here has had discussions about grants and feeling uncomfortable about grants. So I think that's one of the main reasons I brought it forward, was that I think we need to have that discussion. We've had it before, but to have it again. So I'm just going to open this to anybody else who has any comment to make about this. Oh, jeez, okay. Councillor Clare?
No one else is going to speak. I'll fill that air. No, I think it's a great idea. I think it's something we've been, that's been floated around in different ways for the last two years, at least. I do, I did want to note that I, I hope that in the recommendations that ultimately come forward from staff, that we're somewhat, I think, broad in our interpretation of the strategic, the items in the strategic plan. So, because some of the grants that we've been giving out have been those that are filling gaps in services, so doing something that we are not doing as a municipality or haven't prioritised. But I think there is space in, as the strategic plan comes together around, you know, what, what does a safe and inclusive community mean? And if somebody comes forward and says, we have an idea that you might not be doing as a municipality, that we feel aligns with that, then maybe that should be considered. So I just wanted to say that I hope it's fairly broad, and I realise that the wording does specifically say "not limited to", but I did want to note the, the missing word "environment" in the list of those that I hope will be featured in, in that new strategy.
Thank you. And is there any other comments? Councillor Adam?
Thank you. So, so this takes it away at, at the budget period, where we would then deliberate, and, and actually, I think last year we did it before the budget, and then we were basically hashed out at that point. And it takes it away from that for us to have these priorities, and then send it over to staff, and then, and then have, have that go forward. So it's also adding a lot more workload onto certain departments when, when that's coming up. Do we have the capacity to do that?
Thank you, and that's a very valid question. And would you like to ask any staff member?
Maybe, Julia, did you want to, maybe? As a lot of them are, would be event-type things, so it would come through the Parks and Rec. Thank you.
So through the chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. So from a staff perspective, staff have been involved with some members of councils on the concept of bringing this forward. Without recognising that we don't have a program currently in front of us, it's hard to talk about what the capacity implications might be. I think that there are opportunities in a variety of ways to look at some of the efficiencies and aligning from a strategic standpoint. Essentially, if this were to be kind of directed to staff, we would need to take the time to establish the program, have an understanding of what the implications are in the community, whether that can happen within the current resources that we have or not. I would be hesitant to say right now what that is, but I can say that from, from the senior leadership team within, not only in Parks, Stricken Culture, but other divisions as well, that there is an opportunity, and I think we would put the best foot forward with our teams, and recognising that there, there may be an implementation phase through any program that might come forward. So perhaps the first year is a smaller implementation, and we grow on that. I think there's so many opportunities of what that might look like.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Councillor Clare?
On the, the staff resourcing perspective, I think it does occur to me that in some, in some cases, there might be other bodies already in existence that could support staff in that. So you mentioned, like, PRC. There is a PRC Advisory Committee who could potentially, you know, pick up some heavy lifting on reviewing proposals for that and looking at recommendations on environmental issues. We have the Environmental Advisory Committee, who already has a plan when it relates to the Climate Action Plan that's coming forward at our next meeting around community members being supported and advancing elements of that plan. For example, I don't know if, you know, for economic development, I think is the other big department that would be covered through tourism. And that, there is sort of already a tourism kind of roundtable group, and perhaps they could look at that. So this might be a really great opportunity to not only create linkages between community initiatives and our overall strategic priorities, but also to, you know, find opportunities to work collaboratively with community members who are already serving in some sort of function within the municipality to, to be that bridge, I guess, between community and municipal priorities.
Thanks. Any other comments? Councillor Daryl?
So I got a question about the annual event portion. Is that something that would be prerequisite for their application? Is it going to take place at the start of the process? Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. Could you just say the first part, because I had a train in my ear?
The event portion, is that going to be like a prerequisite of their application, that they attend that event, like of applicants?
Oh, yeah, and, and through this motion, it doesn't direct the program entirely. So, so the details of this program are not built yet. It actually is meant to direct it over to staff to build those kinds of parts. What's in here is to speak to, here are the types of things that need to be in the program when it's developed, so that it can execute it in this way. So for example, one of the things that councillor Clare had asked about is, you know, what happens if the community comes up with an idea that hasn't been brought forward? So it's in here as an innovation event, where we open it up as annually saying, hey, come forward with brand-new ideas. So I don't have that level of detail, because it hasn't been built yet. What's in this motion is simply to say, here are the parts that need to be in a program when staff come back with it.
Okay, so I have, I have a question of my own. So as I mentioned, I had a very different thought. So a question that I have for councillor Todd is that, in a comment, I guess, that when I read this and we talk about strategic priorities, I kind of feel like anyone could position what they're asking for as a strategic priority, however they manipulate that, that language. So my thought was, I would like to reduce the dependency on grants. There is no obligation for the municipality to, to give grants. Community members have the option to give and donate however they wish, and now we're doing this through taxes, so my, or, sorry, through the levy. So my, my thought was to try to eliminate this as much as possible, but I don't see necessarily a clear path in achieving that goal. So the question that I have is, is, is the motion that, that you wrote and brought forward, is it to reduce the levy? Or is it based on the discomfort of us going through the process of deciding who gets a grant and who doesn't?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Under this motion, the amount of money that would come from the levy can absolutely be reduced. The way in which this is set is council would set strategic direction, which is our role. Staff would interpret that strategic direction, and then come forward saying, here are some of the things that we think we can do to enable that strategy. They would then put a cost to it, come back to us at budget time to say, this is what we believe we should do, and here's the budget. If we choose to lower that, or reduce it, or eliminate it altogether, that still sits in the hands of council.
Thank you, and councillor Clare?
I just have to say, I really strongly disagree with the notion that we should be reducing the budget for investment in community initiatives. I think we have no qualms about engaging private sector support to fill gaps in our own capacity when it advances our priorities as a municipality. And I really see this as being the equivalent, only we're engaging with nonprofit, community-based groups to advance things that, that are in line with our strategic priorities. And in a lot of cases, those groups are doing something that we do not have the capacity to do. And so I really, you know, the idea that $150,000 is, is a lot of money to invest to say, hey, community, can you help us get to where we want to go collectively as Port Hope? To me, that is not a lot of money, and I think that it's, it's really important to recognise that government cannot do it all, and not everything in our strategic plan can or should be done. and not everything in our strategic plan can or should be done, executed solely by municipal staff.
Sure, go ahead.
And I appreciate what you're saying. Although this can reduce, it does not have to, right? Okay, and I think that's the important thing. And the other piece that I think we should just keep in mind at this point is this is direction to create a program. And I appreciate the fact that we want to get into the minutia of that, but that'll come back to us. So it could go either way. I think the flexibility that this gives is when we don't have money or we feel we have to tighten the strings, we're allowed to. And if we end up in a windfall, we can play into that as well. There's much more flexibility in here than what we have currently on our books.
Thank you. And Councilor Adam.
Sure. So when it comes to flexibility on the financial aspect, we've always had that opportunity. Just because people applied didn't mean we had to say yes to it. We could have always said, you know, whatever organization that has applied for 11,000, no, zero. We could have always done that for a reduction. And if we continued that method, we could still do that. Just like if we had $500,000 worth of stuff pop forward, we could say yes to all of it if that's what we thought was appropriate. I don't think that's appropriate, by the way. But now going over, sorry, the second half, I was just trying to answer that. So maybe Counselor Todd can speak to this a little bit about the creativity of the residents in Port Hope that bring forth these different, these events. And I realize that the annual event included, but let's say they didn't have that opportunity. So these events are what make Port Hope so incredible to live in, right? So where's the opportunity for those other ones, those off the cuff ones that didn't make it to that and didn't hit what we thought were our strategic priorities? That maybe we just never thought about, whatever that may be, a bungee jumping contest?
Very short bungee. So if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're asking is if someone comes up with an event and isn't funded by the municipality, how would they hold that event?
No, no. So this grant program, so we would do it through our strategic planning, right? Basically our priorities. But we would hold this annual event. So what if it wasn't something that was that we had envisioned? Because we never thought of this. It was something that was creative that we had never thought of, but they didn't make it to this annual event. Typically, during the budget process, they could apply for one of these grants and then that's how we learned about it or what have you, right? Whereas if you miss this one thing, there's no opportunity. And I just wanted you to speak to that if there was opportunities to that.
Oh, I see. And again, I don't have that kind of detail for the program. What that part of the motion is really speaking to is the idea that it catches or backstops the idea that staff or council always knows what we're looking for. It's written in there essentially to catch, we don't know what we don't know. And so then people knowing that that's going to be an annual event can certainly build up towards it and make it really quite a great community event where it's all the innovation and the excitement and the never thought of's before. And I think we can turn it into something quite incredible. But, you know, knowing that that's events there, I think that would draw. But I can't give you that level of detail. It's like the motion was not meant to build the program. The motion was meant to direct, to get the motion, the program built with these stipulations in.
Thank you. And so just to add to Counselor Adam's question, my thought was that we would have something where we would just have a sum of money that people would come and ask throughout the year, just like we had the Youth Wellness Hub come and ask us for money. And as they come throughout the year and ask for the money, we would decide in that moment. So that was kind of my thought. But just one question as well. The rural to urban community transit, how would they fall in this process at this point? That's something that it's province-wide. Here in our municipality, they go through the grant process. Other municipalities handle it differently. It is an essential service. So how would we address those?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm open for suggestions on that. But off the top of my head, one of the ways we could do is look at it as part of our transit cost and build it in so it becomes part of our transit system. But that's not for me to decide and that's not what we're discussing tonight. But, you know, certainly, I'm sure there's a solution for types like that.
And Counselor Les.
Well, the system we're using now is a poll system. We're pulling the information in as opposed to saying, no, no, no. We're pushing this out. This is what we think the municipality requires. We require a Santa Claus parade. We require this or this or this. How can you best access? We have some money for it. And what are your plans to help us to achieve the results? And I think that's what Counselor Adam was trying to get at.
And Counselor Claire.
Yeah, I really like the idea that you will come pitch your cool idea event because I think it not only speaks to the concern that you raised, Counselor Adam, but also yours, Counselor Mink. Because I think if organizations and community groups know that they have an opportunity to showcase their cool idea, maybe it's something that piques the interest of the municipality to advance through those strategic initiatives budget. But maybe it also catches the eye of a potential corporate sponsor or community members who want to pitch in and say, let's make this happen. So it could become a really interesting sort of community investment project as well as sort of a spinoff from our own municipal investments.
Counselor Adam.
Thanks. So I just want to touch on the annual event. So that annual event would be then organized through our municipality. So that would be an additional event. Where would that funding come from? And what are we budgeting for something like that?
So again, we don't have those kind of details. So the motion is really to get the program started and those details will come forward.
Thank you. And so another question I have, which is a detail as far as, so this would be for charities, nonprofits, for-profit? Is there any auditing process? So can anyone apply or?
So again, we don't have those kind of details. Those details would come forward when the program's built.
So one more question I have would be to, I guess, Director of Finance. The reality of putting a program like this in for this budget and my concern too is, well, that's one question, could it happen for this budget? Second question, I'm not sure who can answer this. I do not want to leave out rural to urban community care transit. And I feel if we don't make that motion now, it'll be one of those conversations, well, we were never given direction. So how do we make that decision right now for those essential services that we currently fund through the grant process?
So in terms of developing a process, we haven't done that yet. But, you know, we do, we do put out requests for proposals on a very regular basis for purchasing process. Not that this would be a purchasing process, but in many ways would mirror that. So I think as Director Snook spoke, I think part of it is about, you know, starting small, getting comfortable with it and building it. I think once you've got the framework for it, I think there's some exciting opportunities then to look at it and to address some different scenarios. You had a second question and it just totally left my mind, sorry.
So funding some of those programs, especially the rural to urban transit. If we pass this motion today, how do we keep track of finding a solution on how to support that program?
So I think the intent of this, not to speak for Counselor Hattrich, but the intent of this, I think, is not to be, you know, in the middle of deciding which organizations are and are not going to go forward and get money. If the want is to do review of how we, you know, if and how we provide transit in the rural area, we've looked at that before and I think we can look at that again, right? We're switching more instead of just providing a grant to an organization that's come forward and said, hey, we'd like to do this, which is kind of how it started, to identifying is this a service? And if it's either a service that we're going to directly provide or a service that we are going to work with a third party in order to be able to provide. So I don't think it's necessarily part of this. That is, you know, something that potentially council could bring forward if there is a want to review how we do transit in the rural area.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments? Okay, so I will call the vote, all in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Okay, so moving on. So the next motion is five point, notice of motion is 5.2, which is opposition to Bill 5. It's moved by myself, Deputy Mayor Mink, consecutive by Counselor Holloway-Wadwani. I'll let, I'll ask Counselor Claire first if she would like to speak to this.
Sure. I think we, you know, I spoke to it a little bit at our last meeting as we asked for it to be considered then. I think this is, you know, lots of reasons to oppose this particular piece of legislation. I see it as a part of a series of moves that the province is making that are systemically stripping authority away from municipalities when it comes to land use planning, but really about how do we control our own futures as a community? In this one, it's particularly important to me because of, you know, it speaks to the loss of environmental protections, the Endangered Species Act. And I would like to note, and Counselor Todd can probably validate this, that, you know, in the work that we have done as an intermunicipal task force on housing and being reminding that housing is the reason that is being used for bringing forward these pieces of legislation. When we did the research across this county in collaboration with all the different stakeholders that play a role in the development of housing, environmental requirements and considerations and impact studies were not raised as a barrier to the development of housing in our community. This bill does not address the reasons that housing is not being built in Northumberland nor in Port Hope. And I think it's really being used as an excuse to do away with really crucial environmental protections that we would like to see maintained in our community.
Thank you. And I think you said most of what I would have said. But I think that we also have introduced many decisions and given staff direction and invested into ideas and thoughts and movements and so on that align with what we're proposing here today, which is opposition to this bill. So at this time, I'll ask if there's any member of staff that would like to comment on this notice of motion. No, okay. So as the original mover of this and now is the chair, I'll ask also if I'll either need to remove myself as chair or ask if somebody else would like to move this in my place. Well, I'll say Counselor Tom's. And Claire, you select to second it? Okay. So we have our new mover and seconder. And I'll open it up for discussion from council. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have to agree with Counselor Claire. And the intent of this does not really facilitate the building of houses, although it can be coached, you can coach anything. And we're doing this because we want to build more hoses, including the Strong Merazak, which is, I think, not really about building hoses either. But that's just my opinion. And, you know, it's wrong. We got to protect what we can protect environmentally. And we're going to be one small voice and a larger voice in Ontario with all the communities and indigenous community jumping on board with this and fighting back. And it's time to push back and I agree.
Thank you. And Counselor Adam.
Thanks. And I couldn't agree more. And I agree with Counselor Claire as well. It's one of those things that if you don't protect it, the very first time that you stop protecting it, you never get it back. You can never go back because it's already gone. I'm not a huge fan of this bill. I'm very much opposed to it. And I appreciate the fact that this has been brought forward. And I appreciate the comments so far tonight.
Thank you. And Counselor Todd.
Thanks very much. And agreed. The work that we've been doing in housing and the intermunicipal task force, this has nothing to do with it. This is unfortunately, it's an unfortunate bill that is simply attacking environment. And I think if the province wants to expedite housing, there are many more ways in which they can do it without having to damage other parts of the province.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, so I'm seeing no more comments. So I'll call the vote, all in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Okay, so I'll move on to updates and new business. Does anybody from council have any updates they would like to share? Counselor Tom.
You very much. I have, I have two updates to bring forward, one of which is around the tourism strategy. So some time ago, staff were involved in creating tourism strategy in conjunction with a third party and members of our community and the business community. There have been many questions asked as to the great reveal of said strategy. And Chamber of Commerce and the HBIA have been asking both those boards. So I'm pleased to announce that on June 17th, staff will be bringing forward a report which will update us on how the tourism strategy is progressing. So we'll be able to hear more about that. So thank you very much for staff for advancing that. I appreciate it. There's been a lot of changes since this has all started, not only in the leadership over in that department, but also at the CAO level. So it has been not an easy game to play. So thanks so much for doing that. The other update I'd like to give is around the intermunicipal task force on housing and homelessness, which Counselor Claire and I co-chair. So for context, this is a task force where members of council across all the lower tiers in Northumberland County, as well as the CAO of Northumberland County, we get together and we talk about what are the ways in which we can advance housing, affordable housing, deeply affordable housing and anything across the entire spectrum. We have now started a roadshow. So in February, we hosted a workshop where we brought together stakeholder groups from seven different areas. So this would be in areas such as building and planning and not-for-profits and financing and elected officials and so on, to try and come up with a list of solutions for this. That report came out in March, am I correct? Yeah, came out in March. And so we are now taking that report from council to council across Northumberland County. And the first one started last night at Brighton, where I'm pleased to say that Brighton unanimously voted in favor of supporting the report and try and integrating some of those policies into their own bylaws. And we will continue doing the same thing across all the other lower tiers to try and bring some synergies and some advancement in housing. So it's more to come.
Thank you. Counselor Les.
Yes, I know I don't comment very often on police activity. I do sit on the Police Services Board and we try and do things quarterly. But I thought this weekend is kind of indicative of perhaps where we're going as a community. Hello, board members. This is from the chief. I hope you had a wonderful weekend. I just wanted to pass on that we had a very busy weekend. Please keep in mind that this is three officers per shift over the weekend dealing with all these calls and went on to list 28 different calls, arrests, interventions, domestics, fraud, follow-up. So not only do they had to handle these calls on as they came in, but now we have to spend the time documenting and going to court with them. So policing is getting busier in Port Hope. I just wanted that for your information.
Thank you for that update. I'm fortunate update, I guess. Okay, Counselor Adam.
Thank you. So a couple of quick things. First one is on the weekend, I had a wonderful opportunity to go out to the Friends of Wesleyville Village where we had a, well, first off, there was a bunch of booths there for people to go around and do different things. But then there was also a baking auction. And many of the counselors here donated something. It was a lot of fun and I thanked them for their hard work. There was a lot of money. It was a lot of fun and, and I thanked them for their hard work. There was a lot of money, uh, raised for, uh, for that, uh, organization, uh, including, uh, one of our, uh, one of our local celebrities, Ed White, uh, had also done some baking. So the next thing I wanted to, uh, to talk about was, and you may think that it's a little bit early to speak about this, but it's not as Canada Day is coming up soon. So, uh, so the Canada Day festivities are, uh, are started, um, uh, doing all that. But, uh, the big thing is the, uh, Canada Parade, uh, the registration is open. So if you're thinking about putting in a float, uh, go on to the website and, uh, take a look. And there is a link there for the parade registration details.
Thank you, Adam. Any other? Daryl, go ahead.
Um, I just want to give an update that, um, next week councillor Claire and myself, uh, will be going to the Rural Healthy Democracy Forum, which is focusing on strategies for strengthening democracy in rural Ontario. I think, um, there's going to be a lot of great information hopefully we can bring back and implement some in Porto.
Thank you. I think that's everybody. So, um, I have two updates. So, uh, one update is, is news from last year, uh, last week, but, um, was the opening of Lyons Park. Many of us attended the official ribbon cutting, which I stayed for the whole time. And then I came back for the community opening. And I, I think it's worth mentioning, I stayed there for the whole time. But, um, what I witnessed, I was very moved by that experience. The park was full of people doing different things. There was children playing in the grassy area, people walking, sitting on benches, throwing balls, eating, talking, uh, walking dogs. It looked like a, a scene out of a staged scene of a magazine. And I know that the cleanup of that park came with heartbreak from many people in our community and excitement from others and a lot of hard work from municipal staff and, and the PHAI movement and so on. So I think that I just wanted to, to take a moment to acknowledge that despite the heartbreak and the controversy that it's being enjoyed. And I think that was worth mentioning. Um, I did go for a little walk with Dave Moat, who, who reassured, um, who acknowledged, uh, the loss of trees and reassured us that, um, this is a cleaner space for all of us to enjoy. So that was nice to hear his words. Uh, so the other thing that I wanted to share, uh, it's not municipal here in Port Hope, but on Sunday, Saturday, I was invited, uh, in Clarrington, our neighbors, uh, just to the west, uh, to go to a, um, an announcement of Wilmot Orchards of a 99, 999-year easement that this fruit farm, uh, achieved. And, uh, we're honored that, uh, they invited Port Hope. I went on behalf of the mayor and it was a fabulous event. And this means that this farm of this very rich, high-grade soil, some of the best in Ontario, is preserved for 999 years. We share a watershed with Clarrington. We share our, uh, Northumberland clerk, uh, writing with, with North, uh, with Clarrington. So it was an honor to participate in that event and to see this, uh, great achievement. And this, this goes back to the notice of motion that we just passed and to see community members moving forward and, and going through that process of protecting that very critical farmland. Okay, so, uh, from there, I don't think there's any other new bus, new business from council. Okay, so, um, it's now time for question period. This is your opportunity to ask brief, direct questions to council members about matters of municipal business. Please remember, this is not a time to ask questions of staff. Operational questions should be directed to staff after the meeting. Contact information for senior staff is available at the door. Keep your questions concise. Long preambles or commentary are not appropriate. Simply state your question clearly and directly. If remarks go too long, the chair, uh, may ask you to either pose your question or return to your seat. So first I'll ask council if they have any questions. Okay, so I'll invite the public. Uh, if you have any questions, please come up. State your, your, um, name and address and press the, uh, purple button.
Hi, Ed White, Mill Street, Port Hope. Um, I have two questions, if that's possible. The first one would be, um, the opposition to bill five. Now, are you, are you sending a letter? Um, or how, how is this going to be expressed? Is it going to be part of like many communities altogether? Cause everybody hates this, this bill. Is there going to be a, like a whole bunch of communities that are going to be involved?
Thank you. So I'll pass it to, to Claire to provide probably more clarity, but there's many municipalities who are currently doing this. So they are forwarding that letter to the province. But I'll ask, uh, Claire if she wants to add anything else.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, number three, uh, the point three of the resolution does say that a copy of the resolution will be sent to all the ministers, uh, of the province. Uh, and yeah, and that we are, we are jumping on a pretty large bandwagon here. We've, uh, as members of council, every week we get a count, there's something called the council information index. So anytime resolutions like this are passed and then they get circulated to other municipalities, we receive those. Um, so sometimes we're inspired by those and, and, and join in. And we have been receiving a lot of, uh, council resolutions from other, uh, Ontario municipalities on this topic. There is, yeah.
That are going in. Okay. And the second one, um, has to do with something that I noticed on, uh, on, uh, Sunday, um, at the Wesleyville thing. There was some time in between what events that were going on and I wandered around the cemetery in, uh, Wesleyville and behind that church. And I under, I understand it's probably not under, under the cemetery sink. But I noticed that a lot of the, the graves, uh, stones were like, they were, they were all overgrown. And, and some of them you couldn't read, um, because the grass and the dirt had, had come in on them and some of them had fell over. And it got me thinking about, um, I wonder if it would be possible to maybe get the kids from the high school or from Trinity College. Maybe there could be a group that would form that we could maybe have some kind of, um, you know, like a tour of the different cemeteries where, you know, the soldiers were and, uh, you know, all this other stuff. And I'm wondering if, is there still a cemeteries group? And are, are they upgrading or are they actually working on the cemeteries?
Thank you. So, um, I believe Wesleyville Cemetery is still managed by the United Church.
Okay.
And they do, I'm sure the person who manages it would love to have more help. Uh, usually those individuals are community members that live nearby and they usually hold on as long as they possibly can, uh, before they have to turn it over to the municipality, which happened with Knoxville not too long ago. So, um, I'm sure if you reached out to, or someone here, whoever, um, helped reach out to that person to find out if they would like some help, I'm probably sure they would say yes. But, uh, it's not managed by the municipality at this time.
Well, do we still have a cemetery board? Like that?
No, we don't have a cemetery board anymore.
We don't have that anymore?
I believe that falls under Parks and Recreation and Culture, that committee.
Okay. I just thought it might be interesting to get the, the kids to maybe look around the cemeteries and see who these people were and what they contributed and where they were from. And we can maybe make a registry or something like that.
I'm sure there's a lot of, lot of potential to have an event there for sure. But, uh, you need to contact the group that manages that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Larry DeFosse, Hope Township. Um, about the paper ballots. Um, I have some concerns and issues. Just to give you a bit of background, I've been the managing, um, deputy returning officer for the, uh, elections in Toronto for the past five. Toronto's still using paper ballots. If it was a money issue, Toronto would have been out of it, uh, a long time ago. If you look at the, the, uh, federal election that we just went through, we now have writings that are being overturned by one vote, right? We need paper ballots in order to have that kind of accuracy and also to have the, uh, ability to, uh, challenge. Once you move away from paper ballots, you have total anonymity and there's no way of actually checking if the person that voted is the person that was entitled to vote. When you walk in to vote, we all know that. You walk up, you show your ID, they know who you are and you, you get one vote and that's it. When we do ballots as an M D R O, uh, every hour we take these lists that we have of people and we swap them so that if somebody were to come back again and try to vote, the odds on them, um, being successful at doing that is greatly reduced. Because first you got to have ID for that person. And second, there's a much higher possibility you can get caught because we do switch, uh, lists.
Sorry, can I just interrupt you? I need to, this, this is question period. So, um, just to, so I'll ask for a question, but just to let you know that this is committee the whole. So if you would like to do a, um, delegation or deputation at council, the next council, this will be there. So then you can provide more information at that time.
Yeah, my question is to you, are you aware of all of these facts that go on behind the scenes to ensure that we have security now? When you have total anonymity, anybody can pick up a phone and call in and so long as they've got that, that number and a little bit of information, which is not hard to get, they can, they can vote in total anonymity. You can also do that with computers. You can't do that when you walk in and you have to present ID. And I'm wondering if you guys have looked at that perspective rather than just the money. Anyways, that's my question.
Thank you. So I guess that's something that council can think about. And if you would like to contact council in between that time or come back in, in, at the next council meeting, then you're welcome to do that.
Thank you very much.
Chris Wallace, Walton Street. Um, I agree with everything, uh, said in the motion about bill five, but couldn't we make it a little bit stronger? There is no reference in this motion to heritage protection, which will all be lost. I, I know the ACO has addressed that. And really not clear enough. Focus on the physical planning, the urban design, the, the, the character of the community because we'd lose it. Under this bill, we would completely lose it. Somebody could put a 15-story glass box, uh, tower on Walton Street in the Heritage District. Somebody could take 500 acres of good farmland and turn them into suburban sprawl. How, how can we give this thing some more teeth? Because it's absolutely atrocious. Oh, incidentally, last thought, um, the, the list of recipients, perhaps you could, uh, include the members of the opposition in Queen's Park because they're the ones on the front line.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I guess, sorry, may I just ask the clerk if that is something we want to amend when it comes back? Is that something that we could do at that time?
That is correct.
Thank you. And thank you for your question. Any other questions from the public? Okay, so I'm seeing none. Uh, just scrolling down and I lost my place. Sorry, I, I wasn't prepared to take over the chair today. Um, so, uh, my notes here. So that is the end of question period and I'm just adjourning at this time. Is that correct? And I don't need a mover. I just called the meeting to an end. Thank you very much, everybody.